Welcome back to the Chad H T Show. Later on this week, a Lubbock City Council meeting. Late last week, members of the council down, down in Austin as LPNL and the Public Utility Commission getting together and talking about the future of LPNL ERCOT and what would happen to all these other acronyms that people got confused about. Joining me in studio, Lubbock City Councilman Jeff Griffith.
Good morning Chad.
How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, glad to have you in. There's, there's obviously been a lot of talk about LPNL ERCOT and the future, what it's going to look like. Last week, there, there were two days down in Austin that, that members spent and LPNL really spent talking about the move to ERCOT. Where are we? What, what happened last week, I guess?
Uh, the best update I can give you and, and the audience is that we went before the public, let's get rid of one acronym, the P U C stands for Public Utility Commission. And that is a panel of three that are the oversight board for public utilities in the state of Texas. And so our first charge was to go before them in a hearing with, uh, we had, of course, legal staff, LPNL administration, a lot of our council mayor were there and we had time to make our case of why we believe we need to move to the ERCOT grid, which is the grid in which the majority of the state of Texas is in. Currently today, we're in the SPP grid, which is basically, we're at the southern end of that Chad. So that runs basically up into the Midwest.
Right.
So if this were to happen, this allows us futuristically, the long-term plan is LPNL may not be in the power generation business. We would allow open market competition to come into Lubbock, just like you have in Abilene, Dallas, Houston.
Last week, there was some talk about cost and one of the, one of the figures that was put forward was this figure of $22 million a year for five years. Where would that money go? And is that, is, is that something that has been, as far as you know, is that a done deal? And, and then we'll go kind of go further into that.
Uh, the listeners need to know that it is not a done deal. It is on the table. And this is for discussion. We are, uh, basically that allows us to get into the grid, but that's not all of it. Folks need to understand that's not the entirety of it. But this, because of the competitive open markets and Texans, we like free market, free market enterprise. And because of the future of power generation and the way our states evolved, we believe this grid is very robust and market, several companies, we believe would enter into the Lubbock market as fast as they can. Again, this is after 2021. So if this 22 million a year, uh, deal would progress, that would be yes for five years.
And that'd be paid to ERCOT?
Yes.
Okay.
And to offset cost of going into the grid. Now, the neat deal is in the assessment, and that sounds like it's huge money. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But you have to understand that, uh, the LPNL is about a 270, just close, around number, 270, 275 million dollar a year entity. So we have, uh, the, the, the ability to save money is greater by still paying those dollars, we believe, and letting retail competition come into this city. It basically would make Lubbock Power and Light eventually a wire company. And you would get, uh, fees or dollars, leases, if you will, from these retail electric providers Chad, that run down the Lubbock, or I should say LPNL power lines. So that, that's a big, huge advantage, but it lowers LPNL's cost dramatically eventually. So this is a, I, I need to explain, and I apologize for being so long on this. This is really a evolution, not a revolution of power for this city.
So, so the, the five-year, let's say that, that this is a, a done deal. I know it's not yet, but if it becomes a done deal where LPNL will have to pay over, you know, five years, 22 million dollars, when does that start? Does that start this year or does that start?
Quick question.
When LPNL or, or Lubbock joins ERCOT?
2021.
Okay.
Is when that would start. So.
So is that, does that mean LPNL at that point, you and I, I guess more so LPNL officials believe they're going to have 22 million extra bucks laying around to where they can?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, because of the, the, all the analysis of this, this, I mean, it's a very complex issue, but all the analysis that's been done the past several years on this show that if, uh, we allow open-ended retail competition and lower LPNL cost, the savings benefit, yes, outweigh that.
Okay. So the 22 million, that'll be available. Is that something that, that you and other council members were surprised about when that figure came out on Thursday? Or was that something that maybe was already discussed when one of the three or four or five different studies was done earlier?
Uh, it had, it had been discussed. The, that, uh, we knew there was some associated, probable associated cost by getting into the ERCOT grid, if this happens. However, that, uh, the numbers, uh, is that, and there's some things I can't say yet because we're still in negotiation.
Negotiation, right.
So please, uh, pardon me on that y'all. But the, the real deal is that the, the associated costs are really, even though it's massive numbers, when you look at the big picture of it, long-term, it's really, in my opinion, a great, great thing for the citizens of Lubbock to keep low-cost electricity for this city.
So as far as you know, let's say we get to 2021, Lubbock joins ERCOT. Again, only 70% of Lubbock, as we know right now, would be allowed to join ERCOT at that time because of existing contracts. And we'll get deeper into that, uh, maybe in the next segment. If LPNL all of a sudden has to pay that 22 million dollars a year over five years, will that, does that mean, since, since they're going to save so much money, those who are still on LPNL, uh, those who, you know, still pay that base rate or that line fee, will we see costs go up at all, you think?
No.
Because of that 22 million dollars?
No, I do not think so. I think the savings is there.
Okay.
Now, again, uh, nothing's written in stone.
Right.
So I can't promise anybody, but the way we're headed, again, this is an evolution. And you, you, to your point on the 30%, the offset there. And so that all is being looked at very closely. We have to take one step at a time. And this is, we believe the right direction on the compass.
Well, when it, when it comes to that 70-30 split, you're going to have, what is it? And the other, the 30% of power is still locked in via contract until, is it 2040, 2041?
2044.
Okay. Is there, so that means they're not going to get competition or that 30%, wherever that 30% is, they're not going to be able to get competition?
We're, we're still working this out.
It's not set in stone?
Nothing's set in stone.
Okay. So it's possibility that, let's say, yeah, that, that a contract or a renegotiation could happen with Southwest Power Pool.
We'll, we'll see. We hope that, uh, we don't know, uh, this, these are very complex. And, uh, this is our, you know, we've been talking about this a long time, but it is every step, because it is such a massive change, uh, really has to be analyzed. This is anything, go fast on.
Yeah. And let's say, before we take our first break, uh, as a council member, would you be satisfied with only 70% of Lubbock being able to get competition?
Yes, because it's still a net gain. Um, the, and it could be my house and yours. So even if it's my house and yours, yes, I'd still recommend that we do this, assuming the dollars are still correct. That's the, that's the bottom line. This is all about making sure low-cost electricity for the future. And, uh, the, the studies show that there's, there's great savings in ERCOT with retail competition today. And no offense to, to the SPP Grid or Southwestern Public Service, the XL Energy that we have a contract with today. The bottom line is we have one provider.
When we come back, we'll get more into this discussion. Also, there is some Lubbock, Lubbock City Council meeting this week. We'll get into that subject and more. Chad H T Show K F Y O, Lubbock City Councilman Jeff Griffith in studio. All right, Chad H T Show News Talk K F Y O, Councilman Jeff Griffith in studio with us today. And Jeff Griffith, Councilman Jeff Griffith still in studio as we talk LPNL, ERCOT and the future. And we were talking about the cost and the cost associated with this move. ERCOT is, is one entity that, that you have to deal with. Uh, there's another entity and, and in the discussions, SPP, they didn't seem too happy that, that Lubbock is, is leaving. And they said, well, with the, the buildup of the infrastructure and everything that we've sunk in, we don't want our customers, uh, to, to suffer if Lubbock leaves. Does that mean, uh, LPNL is going to be on the hook for paying money towards SPP?
It's a great question. Uh, undecided at this point. Uh, I think that you have to understand our contract with Southwestern Public Service, XL Energy, which is a member of, uh, SPP Grid, the, again, the grid that goes up through the Midwest. Uh, there's seven members and XL, I mean, of SPP. One of the seven members is Southwestern Public Service, XL Energy. They, we're a customer of, of them. We're not a member of SPP. So, uh, there's a lot to diagnose when it comes to this, um, the, you know, 30% that'll still be around. We don't know how long, but max is till 2044 is the current contract. So there's a lot, uh, studying going on with that future contract and how it would affect their grid. Uh, I believe that our, uh, when you, sitting there the other day and listening to, uh, some of the arguments, uh, we've made a great case that it does not hurt their customers. In fact, it can save that, uh, the Panhandle Grid, or I should say SPS and SPP, we can actually be some savings that direction. So it's, uh, this is still.
Still ongoing.
Ongoing. Again, it's an evolution, not a revolution.
When, when does a decision on the move to ERCOT, when is that made by the Public Utility Commission?
Uh, February 15th, I believe, we'll have the next meeting in Austin.
And by that time, is that when they want an agreement basically on the, the money to ERCOT and, and if any, any other money is going forward?
That we'll discuss again tomorrow. There is to see where we're at, but, uh, with the Electric Utility Board. But the big deal is that, uh, February 15th is the calendar date to hopefully, uh, get us in. Again, if our numbers are correct, we've got to make sure that, uh, this is the right thing for our citizens. But Chad, this isn't about the next five years or 10 years. It's really 15, 20, 30 years down the road. And changes in power delivery system is upon us. Technology is winning and assure you that, uh, there's more changes to come.
Yeah.
So we're looking, being the 83rd largest city in the United States, we're looking at the most efficient way for reliable power for this city as we continue to grow. And that's not just residential. It'll, our show, our savings on residential side are hefty. Our savings on, uh, business side and institutional side will be very heavy also.
You know, I, I keep going back to this 70-30 split. And, uh, I believe when you were on with Matt and Dave, you said that the 30%, that doesn't mean it's one part of town versus another part of town.
Good point.
It can be anywhere, right?
It can be your house and my house, and it can be, uh, your studio here.
Yeah. So, so let me.
It can be all over.
Let me, let me ask you this. With, with the, the cost savings that, that is anticipated with moving over to ERCOT. And let's say that, you know, that 22 million over five years is, also starts on 2021.
Yes.
If, let's say I'm in the 30% group and where I don't have competition, will I see my LPNL price as of right now? You know, who knows what's going to happen with any infrastructure that's in it? Or, but, but as of right now, will I see my bill dramatically increase?
No.
Due to that?
No. Not at all.
And you still believe LPNL will be highly competitive with what we see throughout the rest of the state?
Absolutely. And, uh, but we're seeing lower prices in, in the ERCOT grid. There's no doubt about it. So, uh, and, and things fluctuate. This, we would be the, we're the third largest municipally owned electric utility in the state of Texas, only behind Austin and San Antonio. We're the first to want to go into the deregulated market.
Right.
That is a big, big thing.
So those who are still on LPNL, they'll see a cost reduction, you believe?
I think that it'll stay, it'll be stable.
Okay.
I do not think you'll see cost increases. No.
How will LPNL prices, as of right now, from what the research that you've seen, how do LPNL prices right now compare to the rest of the state? And I'm only talking about the electricity part, but, but the electric part, how does that compare with the rest of the state?
Uh.
That's on ERCOT.
Okay. Uh, actually, some of their cut pricing is, is lower now. There for a while, we were.
There as in ERCOT?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in ERCOT, some, uh, we're seeing some lower prices. Uh, so I think that ours, we've moved up a little bit and, and I don't have exact dollars for you and I apologize. I think we've moved up just a little bit. I think you could see a savings of, I'm, again, I'm ballparking, so y'all bear with me.
And a lot could happen between now and 2021.
Absolutely. Uh, price of natural gas is, is a factor. Uh, but the, the real deal is that the, it's probably 20, $25 per house, average household. Uh, big industrial customers should see even probably even greater because of a deregulated market.
Do you think that'll make LPNL, the electric side compete even more?
Yes.
Okay. When we come back, we're going to get into the upcoming Lubbock City Council meeting and much more. Lubbock City Councilman Jeff Griffith, Chad H T Show K F Y O. All right, Chad H T Show News Talk K F Y O. Councilman Jeff Griffith still in studio. And, uh, Councilman, there's, there's one thing I want to go back on just real quick on LPNL. And I know we have one caller on, uh, so we'll get to him too. Uh, the, the $22 million that's going to be available in 2021, why is that not available right now for cost savings?
Great question, Chad. Those dollars now, uh, pay for added, uh, power purchase agreements into the SPP Grid. So, uh, we have some added costs today that we think those savings are there. That is, everything, everything we've analyzed, this is to the positive, uh, to lower cost, even with that 22 million a year. So the, uh, that, that'll eventually go away.
Let's go to the phones real quick. A question. Jacob, you're on with Councilman Jeff Griffith.
Hello, Councilman Griffith. Thank you for, for, uh, accepting my question. Um, I have a question for you with respect to the, to the ERCOT grid. Um, how, how stable is that grid in comparison to the grid that we're on now? Uh, is there a large risk for any kind of rolling blackouts or anything like that?
Jacob, that's a great question. And I actually, I appreciate you bringing it up because early on in ERCOT grid, uh, yes, their infrastructure was not, the build-out was not as great. Uh, are you familiar with that wind farm, one of the largest five in the world, I believe, that is, it's in the triangle between Snyder, Sweetwater and Big Spring?
Yes, I, I've seen it in that path there. I'm not familiar.
You know, Jacob, what I'm talking about. So that has, that's in ERCOT grid. Though, though lines, the trunk lines there run direct, transmission lines run to the metroplex. As we've had, uh, clean natural gas generation, uh, improvements in the ERCOT grid, we've had obviously multiple wind power farms added to the ERCOT grid. The, even with the growth of the majority of the state of Texas, the brownout issue of the past, we believe is in the past. And in the past two, three years, we, that is not really, and there's some more build-out too, I might add, down on the Gulf Coast. So we're not, we're not dealing with an issue that is, uh, I think in the future. I think that is in their past. The ERCOT grid was created so that the state of Texas, the majority of the state of Texas electric utilities would be competitive and not have to answer to Washington, to the FERC. FERC is the federal regulation on electricity. And so ERCOT does a, efficiency's a key component, but reliability, and that's in their name now. But, uh, they, uh, the infrastructure build-out is much better. That's a great question. Thank you for asking.
Appreciate the, appreciate the call. All right, let's get to this week. Lubbock City Council meeting on Thursday. There are numerous things on the agenda, but I think one major item on the agenda, which will, uh, have ramifications for a future election.
We will take up for the first time, but we've, we've had many discussions on this, Chad, but, uh, council executive session. Uh, but this will be the first time that it's actually agenda item. And that will be a, to call a citywide election, May 5th, to authorize the abandonment of the Lubbock Municipal Auditorium and Coliseum. And the, in our charter, uh, and, and not to wear everybody out with too much history, but in our charter, it does say that we have a citywide election if we want to abandon those properties. Those properties cost us approximately $700,000 a year to operate. So we're, we're in the hole on those every year.
Yeah.
Uh, with Buddy Holly Hall being constructed downtown, we really don't need the auditorium anymore. Uh, we have maintenance issues galore that we have not, uh, kept up with. And now it's to the point where we believe that it's not worth it. Um, and I think that our council will probably move forward, uh, to vote. That's my thought. I haven't heard any different.
Sounds like you support the idea of moving forward.
Absolutely. I've actually been, uh, working, and, and by the way, if once, if this, if the city does vote to do this, the cost savings to the city, it would, that property would go back to the state. The state deeded that property to the city of Lubbock in 1944, I might add. 1955 is when the Coliseum Auditorium was built. But the big deal is it would revert and it will go back to Texas Tech. And Texas Tech is, I believe, on board this big time. And I've been in discussion with them, with their administration on this for, uh, actually a number of years.
And the city of Lubbock will not be responsible for any demolition costs?
Thank you for bringing that up. We will not.
Yeah. Which is a good thing.
Yes, absolutely. We do not, yeah. And, uh, Tech has, I think, some very good plans for it. I'll let them speak to that futuristically.
Are, are there any plans, real quickly, on, on a future arena for Lubbock?
Good point. Uh, yes, that is being discussed. I've got one meeting on that later this week, uh, with several entities around Lubbock, uh, about a future possible, uh, exposition center. So we still need a dirt event center for rodeo. Uh, lots of opportunity there, but we think that maybe the city doesn't need to own that.
So that might be a private.
Could be private.
That's what, is that what you're aiming for, is a private organization to come in?
Could be private. You know, Buddy Holly Hall is, uh, under construction now. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, we do need a place for the rodeo.
Okay. When we come back, uh, our final segment of the day and our final segment with Lubbock City Councilman Jeff Griffith, Chad H T Show K F Y O. Chad H T Show News Talk K F Y O, Lubbock City Councilman Jeff Griffith in studio. And then, uh, Councilman, it is political season and, uh, you have, uh, the Lubbock mayor who's running for reelection. I've noticed you have not made any announcements as far as your future, uh, on the Lubbock City Council. Will you be running for reelection?
Uh, Chad, it's, I mean, first of all, I've really enjoyed my three and a half years. Uh, I really have. It, it is not an easy job. Uh, it's, it can be very challenging. It can be fun. You make $25 a month. You work about 30, 35 hours a week. But I'd never given back to the city and, uh, lived here all my life and been blessed in business and felt like it, uh, was my charge to do so. The, um, been very blessed that I got elected. I'm very humbled that I got elected, actually. Uh, thought about it a lot, prayed about it, uh, smoked a couple of cigars on it. And, uh, yes, I have picked up a packet, but I have not filed. Yes, I will be. Uh, I appreciate you asking. Uh, I'm honored to serve this city. I love where we're headed. Yes, I'd like to do, but I, you know what? I didn't tell you. I do believe in term limits. So I think this would be, after, if, if I were to get reelected, I think that would be it. So.
So one more, one more term?
One more and, uh.
As a city council member?
As a city council member. Yes, absolutely. I, I don't have political.
I do want to clarify that. As, as a city council member, one more term.
I don't have political aspirations. I, I love our city and I love where we're headed. There's some great things. There's some issues. We've got crime. Uh, in my district this past weekend, uh.
It was a violent weekend just overall in Lubbock.
It really was. And, and I had a neighborhood, uh, group, Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association meeting with, had Chief Stevens there, had, uh, code enforcement, uh, administration there. We talked at length about issues, but, uh, that's something that, that is really important to me going forward is the public safety component of where we're headed. And, uh, we know we've got serious drug issues in the city. Crimes against property are high, but, uh, we got a great force, a great administration of our PD. And it's something I'd like to make sure we follow through with. And that is, we've got to take care of our citizens. So, uh, hopefully we can, can corral some of these horrible drug issues.
What are some of the other, you know, I, I know the mayor, uh, last week during the, the state of the city address, he kind of outlaid his, his, uh, his vision. And I know he'll be probably continuing to do so at the coffee with the mayor event, uh, this week. What are some of your other visions besides crime and, and lowering crime? What are some of your other visions for Lubbock as we, as we move forward?
Transportation's always an issue. Uh, and I'm proud that we've got, we're about to finish 19th Street and that corridor. And that's been a good public safety project that Texas DOT and Texas Tech, uh, partnered with us on. Uh, we're about to finish the widening of Marsha Sharp. And I apologize, that's taking a little longer because of weather issues. But, uh, we were able to brag that we got the extra money to, to get that project done. That's 58,000 cars a day already on Marsha Sharp Freeway is the traffic count. To give you an idea, I think 77,000 on Interstate 27 between 19th and Marsha Sharp. So, uh, it's, it continues to grow.
People are moving.
Absolutely. Downtown redevelopment is still a neat, uh, fast-growing, uh, area of the city. I think you'll see that continue. I'd like to see that through. But as far as, I think, public safety and crime are, is my number one. I do want to finish, uh, this 34th Street project, east and west. Uh, selfishly west, but, uh, from Quaker to Slide, but it needs to be finished also towards the interstate. So I'd like to see that transportation, uh, back to transportation. That, Chad, is important. We've inner-city neighborhoods, we've got code. we've got code enforcement. Uh, I'm heavy on that because we've got to have great code enforcement. I would like to see us get a little heavier, uh, not heavier-handed, but uh, maybe, uh, not as passive in our approach to code enforcement. And, uh, that's something that I will be pushing for if I do get reelected.
Uh, back to, uh, what we were talking about earlier with the Coliseum Auditorium.
Yeah.
And you were saying the need for a, a dirt, uh, a dirt, uh, event center or, you know, probably just an event center that would allow dirt inside because the United Supermarkets Arena, they don't want dirt inside that place. They, they say no dirt. So, uh, if there is an arena built that would allow for a rodeo and, and maybe other events, where do you think that would be located at? And I mean, has there been any discussion on it?
That's a great, uh, there's been, there's been a lot of discussion on it. Nothing concrete, nothing, uh, solid as far as placement, if there, if there was something constructed. Uh, depending on the entities that come forward, uh, to do this project, I think will determine a lot of where that placement will be. I don't think it'll be on the, it would probably not be on the Texas Tech campus.
Right.
I pretty much assure you that because they are running out of room. Uh, they've got, again, if the Coliseum Auditorium vote goes through, as I sure hope it does, savings to our city, uh, and Tech needs that property for, uh, their projects. I think that it's a, and, and people need to understand it, when it reverts to them, we, it, we abandon it and it goes to them. It does not, it's not sold to them. There's not a monetary gain for the city.
Right.
Uh, but the, there is a $700,000 gain of cost offset to the city, to the taxpayers.
And that's not in a, that, that's not a facility that, you know, with, obviously with the announcement last week that Celebrity Attractions wasn't going to use the auditorium anymore. It, other than the ABC Rodeo, there's not much going on in that facility, right?
I believe 10, I think we had 10 toll events scheduled.
At 700.
For a year, for a year.
Yeah. And $700,000 a year is what it costs.
We do have a, a contract with Texas Tech Athletics right now that they're using it for basketball practices.
Right.
So, but now, uh, with some very generous folks helping, uh, Texas Tech is going to be under construction with a basketball, uh, practice facility across from the Spirit Arena. So that's a neat thing that's happening for Texas Tech basketball. But we have really, uh, we'll see where these, these ideas and thoughts go as to where to locate a future dirt event or exposition center.
Do you think that's still years away?
Yes. I think it probably is. I think, uh, it takes a while to get these things.
Yeah.
Really thought through properly.
Speaking of taking a while to get things going, uh, what, what's the latest on the Citizens Tower? What's the progress on that?
Thank you for asking. Uh, we've pretty much, the, the demolition's pretty much totally done. It's real close. They'll start reconstruction of that property, that whole campus. I think you'll see it dramatically change in the next 90 days.
The last time I saw it, it had a big hole on the side.
It, yeah, it, we're not, uh.
That's not a permanent feature, is it?
I assure you, that is not just a window or a skylight. Uh, assure you that that will be totally redone. And, uh, it's something the citizens are going to be very proud of. Economic development in redevelopment in downtown. I, I can't, you know, I know this sounds, uh, like an if, but I believe it is a, for sure, that, uh, the, the dynamics of that campus and the dynamics of Buddy Holly Hall will change our people's perception of downtown. But the big thing is that, uh, we still need to populate downtown. We need people living in downtown. But, uh, the Citizens Tower will house departments today that are not in the current city hall. Uh, we're still analyzing current city hall, what to do with it. Still could be the police headquarters with our public safety substation plan.
So it's still up in the air?
Yes.
Uh, are, are y'all done, as far as you know, buying other pieces of property around Citizens Tower?
Yes.
Nothing else going to be done?
We now have, we now have, uh, the parking plan and we now have health department and, uh, municipal, uh, court also situated there. So it's, it's going to be a great campus.
Councilman Jeff Griffith, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Chad, thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Have a great day.
Absolutely. Uh, council meeting this Thursday. A lot of news will come out of that, I'm sure. Chad H T Show, K F Y O.